Okay, we're good. We'll go ahead and call the order. Um, let's see here. I'm just gonna read this for the public here. Virtual information governors declare a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued an executive order N 3320, which directs California to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority of the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health safety precautions. Then this meeting is utilizing the GoToWebinar application for this live broadcast. The first, for this meeting, we will be using the questions functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the question section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel that is on the right side of your screen. The mobile device, there is a, on the mobile, on mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the question screen. For those that would, hold on one second. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted at that time. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris?
I'm here. Who was that, please?
Judy Sanchez?
Yeah, thank you Judy. I couldn't understand my speaker. Go ahead. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden?
You're muted, Mark.
I'm here.
Councilmember Escondola?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
All right, and Mr. Councilmember Shaw is going to give us some words of inspiration or indication, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I say a word of prayer over us tonight, a couple of words of inspiration. We're in a crisis and it's very important that we try to stay encouraged during this time because, uh, as everyone said, we will come out of this. Let's have a, um, an outlook that we want to be a even if type person. Even if life throws us a curveball, we're gonna make it through here. And a couple of quick benefits for, um, going through a crisis. A crisis is a time to take the opportunity to say thank you to those that are doing a lot of good work during this time. And then benefits of a crisis also include being able to develop a confidence that isn't based on our current situation, but yet based upon the future we're gonna have coming out. So, uh, hopefully those words will speak to someone and let's say a quick prayer tonight. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to come together, uh, even through technology. We just pray for your wisdom and as I've heard a lot of ministers say over the years, Lord, help. Help us make the right decisions. Help us do what's right for this community. We thank you now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Dave. Um, Councilmember Cardoza, so you have a flag behind you. Would you mind leaving us in the, oh, there's one up there. Thank you, Judy. I'll start. Everyone look at their flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, oh, sorry, America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, every day and I'm gonna stand up and the view of the camera here. Point was taken. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. City Attorney, we have any report, anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no items to report from closed session, including the special closed session on the 13th and on the 20th.
Very good. Thank you very much. And do we have any requests to modify the agenda? And do we have approval of the agenda? Nothing? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if we could withdraw item recommendation C from item 11. So it'd just be approval of recommendation A and B.
Okay, thank you for that. I, on my agenda here that is prepared for me, there is no C, so thank you for that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's item 10.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, I will make that note.
Senator Mayor.
Yes.
Can you clarify again which item and what letter you referenced?
Yes, this is item number 10, the Feather River Mill matter. It is recommendation C for approval by the Board of Directors as accessory agency. We don't need to do that at this time.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item number one, which is a ceremony presentation regarding Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. We are acknowledging unfortunate issue, of course, of child abuse, and the city will proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and will mail the proclamation to Casa de Esperanza. We have the, the proclamation itself is available online. And now on to item number two, COVID-19, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. Somebody wasn't here to start anything.
You can have a presentation, Mayor.
Hold on, I gotta get my dog. All right, what's the question?
We have it, it says Parks and Recreation presentation for this.
All I have is, uh, well, I, this, it's got the proclamation for child abuse and then the other, and then the other thing. Right from child abuse, COVID.
So Mayor, I believe I'm on. This is Brad McIntyre, your Community Services Director.
Okay, Brad, go for it. Welcome.
Thank you. Hopefully you can see a couple of slides. Uh, I've got four slides. The first one is just the title, so we can go to slide number two. In the last couple of weeks, Recreation Division has, uh, received a lot of calls from our customers requesting help and or resources to keep their children active during these challenging times. Our recreation supervisors, uh, came up, uh, with a virtual recreation center. With the help of George Barlow, we have it on our webpage. It is now live. It is on our homepage, and if that, uh, if looking at your second screen, this is what it looks like, um, at the bottom. And it's called Virtual Recreation Center Online Activities for All Ages and Resources. So then if we go to the third slide, there are a variety of categories. The third and fourth slide is really one screen. Uh, we just, the screen is so large, we just broke it up into two different slides. But there are a variety of categories, uh, that our customers and our community have access to. The first, as you can see, are different ideas for kids, uh, senior fitness, that gives people the ability to, uh, obviously exercise and do arts and crafts. There are categories for individuals that can't see. Also on their arts and crafts, kids cooking, fitness for older adults, fitness for kids, virtual tours, uh, and story time. It is, uh, staff has done an amazing job by, uh, creating, uh, a lot of the opportunities in all these categories. There's five or six links that go to, uh, whatever you're looking for. And our fitness for adults, uh, our Fusion Fitness is with one of our local instructors at the senior center. Uh, she's, we've done a couple of live and then recorded them. Some of the things that, uh, I can tell you personally, um, there's a virtual resource as well. It's on the bottom right. Uh, it teaches people how to, how to Zoom, uh, which everyone's learning how to do that. Um, also, my son went to the virtual tour college campuses. Uh, there are at least 150 colleges that you can click on and do an actual tour of those. Um, and of course, this time of year, you've got a lot of sophomores and juniors that are trying to or would be on vacation going and looking at colleges. So this gives them that opportunity. Um, I'd like to draw your attention to the Just for Kids Storytime. It's obviously for younger, uh, children, uh, but we also have, uh, two stories in Spanish and in Punjabi. Anyway, so, um, and you can also do like on animals and wildlife, you can click on the Seattle or CA, San Diego Zoo, and it's a live cam. Um, and, or you can go to the Sismonians, Smithsonian National Zoo as well. So it's just a great resource. Um, again, I can't, uh, give enough shout out to our recreation supervisors and George Barlow for getting it on, uh, on the page. So there's that piece of information, and if you have any questions on that, um, I'll certainly take some at this time, but then I do have one other piece of item as well.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Brad, are these, uh, free or is there a small fee for these?
That's a very good question. They are all free. When we first put it up, we actually had, uh, two that actually accidentally got on there. Uh, they were the cooking for kids, uh, but once we realized that people had to pay, we, uh, we got it off.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it.
Brad, what efforts are we making to let the public know that this is available?
Yeah, another good question. So we started promoting this on social media, uh, last Friday. And we've, uh, sent a link out, an email with the link to over 12, of our 12,000 current customers that have provided us emails. Uh, since it's been up and going, uh, Mr. Barlow told me that we've had over 5,000 people, um, looking at it. And we're also looking for comments, so if people are listening to this, um, I hope that they go on. And if there's something that we can try to find for you, um, or if you're looking for something else, please hesitate to push the comment button and, uh, do a request or tell us what you think.
All right. Great idea. Thank you very much.
And then the second part is, um, in addition to our, uh, recreation and putting this together, they're gonna start, uh, on Friday. Uh, they are hosting what we call playful pickups, uh, starting this Friday, and it will happen at Gauki Aquatic Park, uh, between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM. We're picked because this is when students in Uba City Unified are going out and getting meals at schools. So we wanted to make it conducive to, uh, at doing it at the same time. So every week, staff will be providing a physical activity and an arts and crafts project. Cars will drive through, uh, staff will be, of course, wearing protective, uh, wear and be handing out, uh, for like this Friday, they'll be handing out jump ropes and a sidewalk chalk. Approximately right now, I think we've spent close to $1,000. Uh, all the funds are being sponsored by the Friends of Uba City Parks and Recreation. And I gladly entertain any questions on that.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Brad, taking what I said earlier, first of all, thank you, uh, for your work on this. You know, I think this is, uh, good steps going forward because people are getting cabin fever. And I think that we need to take this forward across City Hall. And we need to learn going forward how to stand up City Hall in a virtual world to where, um, instead of our residents having to come to City Hall at 12:01, if we can take this across all of our departments to make it easy for, uh, City Hall to come to them, this is a great first step, uh, reaching out to, to our residents and offering the Parks and Rec Services, in a virtual environment. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
So, um, along these lines, uh, Mr. Mayor, can we ask other questions as well, not just of Mr. McIntyre?
I don't see why not.
Do we have Chief Landon with us tonight?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Chief. Um, just a couple of quick questions because, um, I know that there's, uh, seem to be different flurries of activity with going on with our, within our city during this pandemic. Uh, have we seen any trends within, uh, law enforcement with increased calls? There's, uh, information that's been brought up at, uh, you know, different times about, uh, you know, everything when we talked earlier with child abuse, domestic violence. Uh, have we seen any trends in this, uh, because of people having to stay at home?
So I'll break it down into two different months, the month of March and the first 20 days of April. In the month of March, we've seen about a 25% decrease in violent crimes and a 21% decrease in property crimes. For the month of April up to date, and bear in mind, not all these are, uh, inputted yet, but the violent crimes are down about 40% and property crimes down about 15%. So we have seen an uptake in shoplifting and, um, right now, nobody's really going, um, well, we've seen an increase of people not wanting to go to jail, so we've also seen violent reactions to people trying to get arrested. We've had four of those last year. At this time, we had zero. But overall, crime is down significantly. Calls for service are pretty steady. We're just, uh, different types of calls right now. A lot of the COVID-19 type calls, more calls to transients finding different places throughout the city, um, moving them along and seeing if we can get them into a place for shelter or try to get them placed into a hotel if they meet the requirements.
Okay, Chief, thank you. And not that you know where we're going in the future, but, um, what do you think the trends might be as we begin to start the process of reopening our area and come back out of this? Um, do you have any predictive indicators to where things will rise on any case as we make that transition back to some sort of, some sort of normalcy?
I could make some guesses. I think one of the areas you're going to see a more of an impact is traffic. We're probably down about 30, 35% less people on the road, so I imagine as people get out on the road more, there's gonna be some more of, uh, traffic accidents, those type of incidents. I, I don't really see, uh, or have a way of predicting what types of violent or nonviolent crimes we're gonna see in the near future, but I couldn't predict that.
I, I appreciate it, Chief. Just kind of a gut instinct because we are, we're in a crisis like we've never seen before. And, uh, along those lines, I know that, uh, a lot of people have been coming together to, uh, you know, petition the governor or reach out to the governor, back more of the local control, working with Dr. Lou, and I know there's three teams putting together to, to try to figure out how we get this, um, this area going again. And, uh, we're just wondering if you had any concerns with that or, um, I mean, I think to many people, it's gonna be a breath of fresh air, uh, to be able to get back out again, but it sounds like no concerns at this point.
I, I think our concern in law enforcement will be the same, to make sure that everybody stays safe and does it in a healthy manner while getting our economy up as quickly as possible in a safe manner.
That's correct, and, and I do appreciate it, Chief, because I think people will feel better knowing that we're doing everything we can do to keep them safe, but likewise, uh, gets back to some normalcy. I think that will stop a lot of the cabin fever. So thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Through the mayor, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Chief, are you still there on the line?
I am.
Um, can you, uh, share how our police officers are, um, taking care of themselves during this COVID-19? Protection wise, PPE or mental health? I'm just interested to know how they do.
Oh, PPE. The, the big thing that we're trying to do is minimize exposure to the, uh, to different people out on the streets. We're trying to maximize. It's, it's the same thing as when I was on submarines, time, distance, and shielding. So we're trying to stay away from people as much as we can while doing our job, but doing in a less proactive manner, um, more directed. When we get calls for service, we are checking their health every day as they come into the department to make sure that they don't have the, uh, any issues with temperature, um, any signs of illness. As they get out on the road, we have all the available, uh, PPE that you talked about to make sure that it's available to them. Officer safety wise, our officers aren't, uh, aren't able to safely wear all the equipment all the time, so they have to determine the situation on the spur of the moment. So the more information that we get going into a call, the better prepared they can be for it.
How, how is the community responding to, um, the new times with, you know, stay in home orders and the changes, um, with essential and non-essential? How, how is the community, what's the feedback you're getting from our, our safety personnel?
You want the, the law enforcement perspective on the essential, non-essential businesses? Is that what you're asking for?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I think we're getting very good compliance. I think some people need to be reminded, but every time they are reminded or they're talked to about the, uh, the social distancing and the other impacts that they have by gatherings, they're always cooperative. Businesses have been very cooperative. I think we've seen a real good, um, success rate of people being non-essential, not opening their businesses. Now, it's not everybody, and we do have to go out to businesses and occasionally tell them that they aren't an essential business based on the guidelines that have been given to us and the public health order by Dr. Lou. So I think most people are
We lost you, Chief.
Am I still here?
I can hear you now.
Okay, I, I think most people are doing the right thing. They want to do the right thing, but again, the temperature's getting warmer, everybody wants to be out, and they're getting tired of being cooped up. But they are very cooperative, the, the people that are, we're coming into contact with on a regular, semi-regular basis, not the same people, but different people.
I thank you for, you know, helping with that because I know that our department has been very instrumental in, um, helping move the information and utilizing our, uh, police force to be educators and at times needing to, um, perhaps, you know, step it up a little more so than, than that we need to, but we do it with, um, with great respect to the, the community. And I want to just thank you for that because, um, we can definitely see the results happening in our community that is shaping and, and good outcomes for us. And a lot of that work has been in your department, in, uh, getting that message and people, um, contacting our services and finding out how to, um, what can they do and what they cannot do. So, um, I want to say that you've done really well for us, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And if I could just put one plug in for, um, for the community, they've been really supportive of the, of the different departments, fire and police, and we've received a lot of, uh, food and other things that have dropped by just to let us know that, um, they're thinking about us as well. So we really appreciate that.
Very true. And, and of course, we can't do this without the community, as you said, to, um, comply and safeguard and taking self-responsibility. It's really been important to all of us, and, um, I just want to say thank you for that, and, um, let's keep moving this, um, into the place where we can be soon amongst each other in different, um, different manners. Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief Landon, this is for you, sir. By any chance, did you ever get any response from Dr. Lou concerning the florist?
Specifically, the florist, they're being addressed with all the other businesses right now. They formed the three different groups. They want to do everybody, bring all the businesses back at the exact same time. Um, and they want to do it in a controlled manner where there's not going to be any issues with health or a reflash or any higher, uh, levels of infection, I guess.
And by any chance, will they do this before Mother's Day? Because I know that was one of our major concerns from the letters. Would you happen to know?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. I know that we have three groups right now that are working on, uh, bringing back the non-essential businesses as soon as possible. I know they're trying to do it in an expeditious manner. Um, I know that that is on everybody's minds. We specifically told them about the, uh, the different businesses that are impacted by the holidays coming up. But again, it's a kind of a public health thing. It's a little bit out of our realm as public safety, so we defer to the experts on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief, for you and your employees for everything you do for the city. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments regarding COVID?
Yeah, through the mayor, sir. Um, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that Chief Landon's doing behind the scenes on some of the, uh, issues that involve essential versus non-essential. I'm not gonna get into the details, but, uh, I know that his group is instrumental in kind of, uh, going through the different changes as they occur, one as recent as last Friday, and just appreciate that effort. It's a, there's a lot of levers being pulled, trying to get businesses open in a reasonable time in, in cooperation with Dr. Lou. Anyway, Chief, I just wanted to say thank you for that, um, for that extra work, and also, um, all the department heads, that are with the city right now, and I will save some more comments in regards to, to, uh, the, uh, opening of the businesses, et cetera, that's on everybody's mind and, um, later for the, our council comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? And Judy, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. We have a comment from Thomas Burns.
Okay.
A general comment, "When you read the First Amendment in the Bill of Rights, it is clear that the public servants have overstepped their authority in this time. Unannailable rights are retained to the people at all times. The right to assemble has been run over, roughshod, and in violation of the people's rights. The government and the media do not own the narrative. We, the people, do have the capacity to determine our own destiny, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Read the Ninth Amendment in your leisure time. You do not need the city to keep us safe. The people can be trusted to take care of themselves. We do not need the city to be our mommy." Thomas Burns.
Thank you. Any others?
No, sir.
Um, we will move on to public communication, item number three. Apparently, citizens, due to coronavirus, comments are to be provided by mail to city clerk. The address is cityclerk, one word, at ubacityoneword.net. Oral comment by phone or in person are currently not available. And let's see. Says we have one written request, and that is from the Downtown Business Association?
Yes, sir. We have two, um, letters, actually.
Okay.
I will read the, the Downtown Business Association first.
Okay.
On dated April 20th, Dear Uba City Downtown Business Members, that the governor and the state representatives know you want to get back to work. While we understand the public health concerns and agree we need to continue to be vigilant in our efforts to reduce and eliminate the spread of the virus, we are ready to begin opening Uba City downtown back up. We need to let our representatives know that this is imperative, that we begin a path forward to get back to work immediately. Your voice matters and it needs to be heard. Please sign to make sure our local officials have formal letter to hear your voice. We encourage other small business owners to write to our representatives and tell them you are ready to return to work and reopen your business. Our local elected officials are hearing our concerns, and while they have no control over changing the current directive, we are letting the governor and other representatives know that we are eager to get Uba City downtown back to, back to you, work. Our local representatives are our best advocates. Here is a list of email addresses to you, excuse me, a list of email addresses for you to contact our representatives easily. Governor Gavin Newsom, only provide an email address. Congressman John Geer Mindy with his email address. Senator Jim Nelson with his email address. And Assembly Member James Gallagher with his email address. And this is from Sandy Drown, the president of the Downtown Business Association. And then the attachment has, um, signatures from some of the downtown business owners.
Okay.
The second letter?
Go ahead, sorry.
It is April 21st, 2020, to the Uba City Council. The subject is response to letter received by Brad McIntyre, and one last question. This letter is from Jeff Brettledge of Cassidy Avenue. His letter is, "Thank you for sending the arborist reports and responding to my questions and concerns regarding the tree removal on Cassidy Avenue during the nesting season. I share your arborist reports with the Department of Fish and Game." I share your arborist reports with the Department of Fish and Game and a warrant as contacted Matt Langley for clarification. It appears you want me and my neighbors to turn a blind eye to the birds nesting in the trees you have removed, like your arborist obviously did. The reports indicated none of the trees had birds nesting in them. Yet you left one remaining in front of my yard that has birds in it. That they didn't see the birds nesting in the tree in the front of my property raises concerns of the validity of these reports regarding nesting birds. I guess the birds this year decided to only nest in your one tree in front of my property. What are the odds? I was really looking forward for an arborist report that was done prior to this project. It appears like these reports are merely letters fabricated after the fact with language that supports covering your actions and to justify the timing of the project. I have attached one of the city's arborist reports from 2007, and this is the type of report I was expecting. I have just one question I would like answering if all possible. One, Brad McIntyre mentioned in his response letter, the city has been aware of the trees needed to be removed on Cassidy Avenue for the past 15 years. I would like to know who or what mandated or gave the city a deadline on or prior to March 30th to warrant these trees be removed the next day as if it was an emergency. In parentheses, plus one hazard priority. Close parentheses. I would also like to thank Manny Perdosa for speaking up during the last meeting and actually driving down the street to see how bad it looks after your action. Thank you, Manny, for recommending that the least the city could do for these folks is to remove the stumps. I'm not sure if any of you would be aware of this is going on without the homeowners reaching out for answers to their concerns. Thanks again for having the stumps removed. Nice to see you are finally finishing something started over a decade ago. This is, excuse me, this all really boils down to poor communication on your part as well as very poor timing for wildlife. Thank you for all your help, and feel free to take your tree in front of my property anytime. Hopefully, after the birds and bumblewees have gone. Thanks for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Jeff Brettledge.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have anybody emailing in with questions? By chance? Or comments, I mean?
No further questions, sir.
Nothing further. Okay. Thank you for everything. As typical, I would take public comment on items on the agenda at the time the item is heard. And this was just the time for folks to comment on items that were not on the agenda. And we just did that. Having nothing else in the queue as far as that goes, we will go on to consent calendar. Four and five, all matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. And confirming, do we have any, well, comment on the consent calendar, Judy?
No comments.
Okay. So these will be items number four and five, and I would
Through the mayor.
For a motion from council. Go ahead, Manny.
I'd like to motion for approval of the consent calendar items four and five.
Okay.
Oh, we have a first and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? None. That's unanimous passage. Onto business items, item number six. Police sworn mid managers letter of understanding presented by Natalie Springer, human resources director. Welcome, Natalie.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Tonight, I am pleased to be bringing forth the police sworn mid manager letter of understanding or LOU for your approval. The last police sworn mid manager LOU expired June 30th, 2019, and we began bargaining in April 2019. We met approximately 11 times to negotiate this LOU before you this evening. Some of the terms that were negotiated are before you right now. A 4% salary increase in year one, which is applied retroactively to July 1st, 2019. 2% hourly rate increase in year two. A non-perceval stipend of 1% and education pay of 2.5% of base salary for master's degree and or completion of the FBI National Academy. And additionally allows the city to enter into Calpers Park Health Insurance for these bargaining members effective January 1st, 2021. There is a cost to these items, which is listed on this last slide. So Judy, you can just, yeah, thank you. At this time, I will take any questions that city council may have.
Doesn't sound like we have any. Do we have any public comment on this item, Judy?
No, sir. No comments.
All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a two-year letter of understanding with the police sworn mid managers and B, approve a supplemental appropriation of 41,300 to the FY 2019, 2020, and adopt budget.
Second. All right, first and second to approve staff recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Unanimous passage. Thank you very much, Natalie. We'll move on to item number seven, presented by Diana Langley, interim city manager, SB 1 Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Project List for 2020, 2021.
City Mayor and Council. So tonight before you is the annual requirement that we bring before our SB 1 project list. So in 2017, Governor Brown signed the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, known as Senate Bill 1. Increasing per gallon fuel access factor, diesel fuel flow factor, and vehicle registration fees for future inflationary adjustments for the purpose of addressing road maintenance and rehabilitation will be seen. So the state can fully deposit those funds into the road maintenance and rehabilitation account. Next slide, please, Judy. So the League of California Cities estimates that the city will receive $1,275,542 of RIMDA funds in fiscal year 2021. The city received approximately $1.244 million in fiscal year 2021. Next slide, please. So amid the COVID-19 pandemic, there has been a reduction in revenue from gas taxes, less gasoline and diesel fuel from purchase. So the local street and road program has no new estimates for funding. As the California Department of Finance has not yet released revised revenue estimates for fiscal year 2020 or 2021. So these estimates are typically published in May. So we assume that there will be a reduction in refund during the pandemic as fuel consumption is reduced. Next slide, please. So the three proposed projects that we're including on this year's annual list include Franklin Avenue between Florida to Gray. This this project has been designed and we're anticipating construction this summer. The second project is Bridge Street between Gray and Cooper. I'm expecting construction most likely next summer. And the next slide, please. Well, the third project is Garden Highway. Well, Judy catches up with the presentation. So Garden Highway between Lincoln and Bow, which we are completing the design for anticipation of construction in this summer. So on the next slide is the proposed project location map, where the locations are identified in green. And then the next slide is just the list of the projects. So with that, staff recommending approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account. Proposed project list for submittal to the California Transportation Commission and adopt a resolution adopting this project for fiscal year 2021 to be funded by SB 1. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question, if you don't mind. When we talk about, say, Pilar to Gray, Lincoln to Bow, Gray to Cooper, does that include the intersections as well?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. All right, Judy, do we have any public comment on the item?
No, sir. There's no public comments. And I apologize for the PowerPoint. It keeps popping out and going back to the beginning. There's a Remlan in it.
Oh, no need to apologize. I think we're all dealing with that today. That's that's fine. My speaker over here was is pretty challenging also, but no worries. Thank you for that. No public comment, no further discussion. We can entertain a motion if anybody's inclined.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Proposed Project List for Submittal to the California Transportation Commission and adopt a resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2021 to be funded by Senate Bill 1 Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Okay.
All right, first and second to approve, excuse me, A and B. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, you too. And opposed? None. Thank you very much. That's unanimous. Move on to number eight, also with Diana. 2017 Storm Damage Repairs, Uba City Discharge Ponds, Approval Plans and Specifications.
Yes, so this slide shows you pictures of our wastewater discharge ponds. So the ponds are located on the inside of the Feather River over within Center County. And during the 2017 Orville incident, there was significant damage to the roadways and then also the embankment. Next slide, please, Judy. So public works and finance department staff have worked with CalOES and FEMA to request financial aid. The application was approved, and FEMA has also approved through their request to install riprap on four ponds. So riprap is basically a rock-type material to stabilize the embankment. Jacobs Engineering Group and MHM have prepared the design, and we expect the construction to start July of 2020. The scope of work includes road repairs, console repairs, repairing the bottom surface of the ponds, hazard mitigation work, and then water conveyance system pipeline repairs and replacement. A portion of this work is eligible for FEMA funding. What we did is, while we have a contractor there, we also wanted to go bid for additional work. And so some of these items will be bid as add alts. And as we get the bids, they will be bring forward the recommendation for award to council. So next slide, please. So of this, about $1.2 million is eligible for FEMA reimbursement, of which the FEMA CalOES is 93.75% of that. And then the additional scope of work was just over $1 million. So again, that additional scope will be bid as an alternate. So that gives us the flexibility to determine if we want to award based upon price that we receive. And so with that, and staff requesting that council adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the 2017 Storm Damage Repairs Wastewater Discharge Pond Project and authorize advertisement for competitive bids. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Diana, by any chance, can any of that money be used towards our defuser and to get us out of the ponds?
No, cannot.
Thank you, Diana.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Langley, just want to be clear that the money that is being used for this repair for the additional repairs is coming out of enterprise fund and not the general fund. Is that correct?
Correct. It would come out of the wastewater enterprise fund.
All right, thank you.
Very good question. Any others? All right, Judy, any public comment?
No, sir. No comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specification for the 2017 Storm Damage Repairs, the Uba City Wastewater Fluent Discharge Ponds Project and authorize advertisement for the competitive bids.
Second.
First and second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much, Diana. Let's get that taken care of. Moving on to item number nine, NLC Service Line Warranty Program, also presented by Diana. So a program we came across down at the Conference for the League of California Cities last year in Long Beach. Looking forward to hearing the presentation. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
So on February 18th, Bill Coffee, Utility Service Partners came before council and provided a presentation on this program. Next slide, please, Judy. Next slide, please. For background, per Title 6 of the municipal code, customers are responsible to maintain their water distribution service line, basically from the meter onto onset on their properties and their wastewater collection service lateral, which would be from the main to their property. The repairs can be costly and unexpected, and the National League of Cities have endorsed a service line warranty program by Utility Service Partners, which has been implemented in over 400 cities. Next slide, please. So the waterline warranty covers the outside water service line from the meter to the house at a cost of $6 per month. And the device coverage is up to $8,500 per repair. The sewer line warranty covers the outside wastewater collection model from the city swimming to the house at a cost of $9 per month, with the warranty providing coverage of up to $8,500 per repair. And they have an additional policy that properties can purchase to cover residential and groundwater sewer plumbing at a cost of $9.49 per month, which the warranty provides coverage of up to $3,000 per repair. Next slide, please. So the program would advertise three times per year with two mailers each time, which the city would review first. They contract with local contractors and farmers. Customers can cancel at any time. And they're only permitted to increase from $5 per month each fall month during. In regard to the marketing agreement, on the February 18th council meeting, there was a lot of discussion related to the agreement. And so staff went back and worked with Mr. Coffee and then also worked with the city attorney to revise the marketing agreement to address council's concerns. Part of that was that USP agrees to identify the city and maintain insurance to city requirements would be a non-exclusive license to utilize the city logos. And then that USP would be required to obtain property owner data. They would not have access to our building. And so it would be their responsibility to maintain property ownership. So staff is recommending adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a non-royalty. So what's what's important about that statement is that there were two programs available. One was a royalty program, one was a non-royalty program. Under the royalty program, the city would receive a small portion of the proceeds that they could utilize as they see fit. A council requested to proceed forward with the non-royalty program, which the city would not receive and proceed from this program. So again, staff recommend adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. And it applies only to resident. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Diana, just for the public watching, there's no deductible, correct? They pay their six or nine or $15 a month, and they can a claim will result in $8,500 worth of repair, not out of their pocket, no deductible.
Right.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, we talked about a 90-day option to cancel. Does that mean they have a 90-day option to cancel folks' insurance policies or just 90-day option to cancel the agreement they've had with the city to conduct business here?
It's my understanding of the agreement.
Agreement, okay. So insurance can still continue technically? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, okay. Judy, any public comments?
No, sir. No comments.
All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a non-royalty marketing agreement with Utility Service Partners, Private Label Inc. of Delaware, to provide residential property owners with the option to purchase water and wastewater service line warranties, but to find that it is in the best interest of the city.
Second.
First and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right. I don't know whether we have started the thumbs up thing, but okay, that's great. Very weak.
Doing that.
It's what?
It's only four of you doing that.
Oh. All right. Thank you very much, Diana. Move on to item number 10. This is the Third Amendment to the disposition and develop an agreement for the Feather River Mill and Associated Properties. Noian Properties LP and H-DAS MYC LLC, also presented by Diana. She might need a drink of water here. Mehmet's online or was, he still is. Welcome, Mehmet. Hopefully, we'll hear from you. And go ahead, Diana.
Okay. So the Feather River Mill property is located on the southeast corner of Bridge Street and Chastity Street. It's called Feather River Mill because there used to be a business on site. It's called Feather River Mill because there used to be a business on site, that was Feather River Mill. There were other businesses as well. Um, through the years, the city um has purchased the property through the redevelopment agency. And um did numerous studies to determine what was on site in terms of contamination. And found that there was significant contamination on site. Uh, going back to 2010, the redevelopment agency entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with a new company. For the sale and development of the seven half acre parcel property. Uh, through the years, uh, we've done numerous studies related to, like I said, determining what was on site. Um, working through the unraveling of the redevelopment agency. And in June of 2017, the city council approved a disposition and development agreement with the new property. That included some key components, one being that the property would be purchased for a dollar. Was determined by an appraisal completed by Seaver during Budenmeyer, and it was proven along the property name. Um, in January 2018, city council approved amendment number one. That changed the date for the closing of the property from January 2018 to July 2018. And then in November 2019, council approved amendment number two, which again changed the date to November 2020. So over the past few months, there's been a lot um movement on the project and we're at the point that. Mr. Noian is ready to move forward with remediation of the property. And so in through the discussions with Mr. Noian, there's been a request for amendment three to the D D A. So the proposed amendment three includes um items such as assigning the D D A to successor developer. And so Mr. Noian has partnered uh with another person to develop to create the H dash NYC LLC of Alpha and Omega Management Company. They're also requesting to change the title company from Russian American title to title. Uh, they're requesting to remove the bonding requirement, so within the D D A, there's a requirement to provide a surety bond. In talking to Mr. and he will. Be able to discuss more about um his request. But basically to waive the bonding requirement, uh, based upon the fact that the city has had a longstanding. Uh, relationship with Mr. Noian on this property. He has um, he's working with a reputable worker contractor to do work. He has acquired a loan for the full cost of the remediation work. And you know, there's there's question as to, does this set precedence in terms of if other people come forward within the city requesting to waive the surety? This is actually a unique piece of property in terms of the contamination that we have a builder. A developer that's going to take on that kind of contamination and purchase the property for a dollar. It's not likely that we'll have a similar situation within Uba City, so I think that this this property could be treated as a unique um. Be treated differently because of the circumstances. In addition, uh, the addendum would also add a contract manager with certain authority to provide flexibility as appropriate. This is just so, as minor modifications remain, we don't have to continue to bring back addendums. And then there's an updated schedule of performance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or um if you'd like to hear from Mr. Noian first, I would be go that direction as well.
Anybody has any questions, we can start there, otherwise, um, Mehmet, if you're interested, I'd love to give you the floor. Let's see, confirming he's here.
Oh, there we go, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome Mehmet.
Wonderful, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much, I appreciate your. Your patience throughout this process, we are at the one yard line, we're ready to start. Uh, we do have a uh, a general contractor, Gilbert's Incorporated, who has uh got a subcontractor named Pacific States. Who are well versed in doing this remedial work. Uh, I have signed a contract with Pacific States, uh, literally, we're ready to start when the uh, the permits are ready. Uh, we have a bank loan from uh Bank Feather River, local bank, uh, to cover the costs of the remedial work. Uh, I talked to Holiday Inn Express on probably a weekly basis, just to make sure that. Throughout pandemic, they're still hanging in there, uh, he is, he's almost done with his construction drawings, he'll be submitting those if he hasn't already to the city. And about 30 days after we complete our remedial work, uh, hopefully he'll be able to pull per permit and get started on his hotel. I would also like to point out that, uh, I don't know if Kurt Gilbert is on the line, uh, I have formed an alliance with Gilbert's Eight. Uh, they are a partner with me in this project and they will be all the way through. And as far as the request to uh remove the bond, I think we're there. And it's an accommodation that uh, I think is reasonable to request, and we just want you to start. Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated. Any comment from council? And Judy, any public comments?
And what would you mean that? I'm sorry?
I was gonna ask one real quick question, Diana, you kind of cut in and out when you were doing the presentation. Was the request to change title company also listed uh under the business items?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, well, okay, that's very good, thank you.
All right, that being said, it's motion time.
I'm sorry, mayor, um, we did have a comment, um, just from Kurt Gilbert. He just wanted to let you know that he was listening also, but he does not have a question.
And who is that for, from, oh Kurt?
Kurt Gilbert.
Kurt Gilbert, okay, good, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution.
I'll serve the motion, can we have a co- uh? Discussion?
We already asked for discussion, nobody made a comment, that's why I'm doing this.
I was trying to wait for the mayor to. So I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead Grace.
Thank you, ma'am. So, um, the question I have is, um, the, the, the project is um slated to begin when?
10 years ago.
I asked, I asked, um, Mehmet, not you, uh, council.
We, we started in 2010, we're, we're wa- we're waiting for permits to be able to start the work on site, so. Maybe Diana can can speak to that, because.
Well, I was asking when projection to actually get going and building this.
Well, the hotel is the first phase, as soon as we're done, he's obligated to start 30 days after we turn over the property to him, begin construction. He has uh construction drawings, he's publicly paid $250,000 uh to get done. I, I don't know if he submitted those to the city yet. Uh, he has all of his permits, plans, everything ready to go, so. Uh, the hotel is the first phase of the project and that's about two acres in back.
Okay, thank you Mehmet, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you Grace.
Anything else?
Through the mayor, I'd like to try it again.
All right, go for it.
Okay, adopt a resolution of the city council approving a third amendment to the disposition development agreement. With H NYC L C C and Noia Properties LP authorizing the sale. Development of real property located at the southeast corner of Bridge and Chastis Street. A P N 52 dash 342 dash 023 and 52 dash 502 dash 008. And B, as the city council authorize the city manager to approve and sign on behalf of the city. Amendment number three to this, this, excuse me, disposition of development agreement with Noian Properties LP. With regards to the property located southeast corner of Bridge and Chastis Street. To be used for the future development of a mixed-use project, A M P 52 dash 324 dash 023. And 52 dash 502 dash 008.
Second.
If you had to use your job, Mark.
I know, I waited.
All right, yeah, for the record, we are eliminating what used to be item number C on there, so we have a motion approve A and B, all and and also a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and opposed? Congratulations Mehmet and Kurt and every and the city of Uba City, thank you. One step closer.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to item number 11. Says here presented by Terrell, but um anyway, number 11 is an amendment to lease. Of the Madden House for the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce offices.
Good evening, mayor and council, this is Terrell.
Oh, hi, Terrell, welcome.
We're just, um, Judy and I were um doing some crash training today.
Oh, good.
So, um, before you this evening is a request to amend um temporary, the lease to the Madden House uh for the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce. So the um, the current lease was signed in May of 2018. And the term is from um, starts in June and it ends the following May. So, um, currently the um, for the COVID-19. Stay at home, as we have all been talking about the um, small businesses and even some of the medium and large businesses are. Are struggling financially and looking to cut costs where they can for this period of time. And one of the costs that they're um considering um stopping is the membership dues for the Chamber of Commerce. Even though the Chamber of Commerce is a very valuable um partner with the businesses and the city of Uba City. So, um, besides the chamber, we have rented the building out to the Uba Center Economic Development Corporation previously. And for a couple of years, the Uba City Parks and Recreation Department was located there. So, um. The terms of the lease um that they're currently paying is um $1,250 per month. And um, in May, it will be going up to $1,350 a month for the next year. So there, um, they um asked for either a waiving of the cost for the uh, for a couple of months or a deferment of the cost. So in um. The first year of the rent, um, the city offered $1 a year and then um, the chamber would be paying. To um, do the the maintenance and utilities, which had been the arrangement before. When they, before they had moved to Marysville. And so, um, this was to help them financially to get back on their feet again, since they had roots in financial times previous to that. So in um, in the um, the paintwork. As collateral for that, they offered the city um, membership for um sponsorship events that they have. And um, the chamber is offering to do that again. So they have a champion circle member benefits of $12,000 of more in investment. And here's listed the current that um members. We have Marnie Sanders on the line as well, um, to answer any of your questions, she's the um, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. And so, um, happy to answer any questions, either I can or Marnie can. Any questions?
I just have a question for Terrell, please.
Okay.
Um, they're asking for this for one year, uh, be sort of like the first year agreement we have. So when we come back next year, will they be starting back at year number four for the uh rental? And uh, payments and so on and so forth, it'd just be a one-year break?
Yes.
Thank you, Terrell.
Through the mayor. Could we ask, um, Marnie, I I just had a question if there was an opportunity to. Do this for six months and then possibly do a six-month review? Is there any willingness to maybe consider that?
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, I I certainly do not have a problem with it, like Terrell had said. I had suggested maybe a several months deferment or some grace on that. And then uh, Terrell came back with this, this agreement. So I I think that would be something that you would need to decide amongst yourselves, but I'm open to that.
Thank you, Marnie, for that feedback, um, I I think that it would be, my recommendation. Would be to, you know, do a uh, a six-month review and. And hopefully things will improve if there's um activity uh within our businesses here in the near future. Um. But I am willing to work with a year, but if we can do a six-month, I'm open to that.
I am as well, I think that would be very helpful to the chamber.
Uh, through the mayor. Uh, go ahead, you're on mute, go ahead, you go first.
Oh, there we go, that's fine, okay.
There we go.
All right.
I was too.
The um, the question I have is, you know, we're really talking about um rent or rent in lieu. And we are great partners with the chamber, so my first question would be, what is the real fair market value rent? Of the property? Because we're saying, you know, uh, roughly 12 or 1250 is going up to 13 or 1350, whatever those numbers were. What is the real fair market value of rent of that building?
If you, um, if you could hold on one minute, let me get it for you.
Well, she's, she's doing that, I'm gonna step away for two minutes, Mark, you got me covered for a second?
Yes, sir.
Through the vice mayor.
Yes.
I was just checking, thank you.
Hi, this is uh Ben Moody with the Development Services Department, um, I looked in that a little bit earlier today in the um. For the response for council and that the going rate is approximately a dollar to a dollar 25 a square foot for a commercial office space. With that space maybe being closer to about a dollar 10. And so there's approximately 2,800, 2900 feet there in that house. So you're looking at a rent close to $3,000 a month, maybe in a typical market.
Okay, thank you, Ben, um, because what I'm looking at and um is we're really subsidizing. And and I I asked that you guys follow me on this journey for just a minute. We're already subsidizing. Roughly 1,500, 1,600 a month as it is. And last year, uh, uh, do you know how much we actually paid the chamber? Because we actually, I think, paid for some different events and stuff, I'm just trying to figure out what our contribution to our chamber is.
So. Sorry. Um, this is Terrell, so um, we paid a little bit over $5,000 for the events to the chamber last year. Plus we have a a membership.
Okay, so roughly between that, um, our true commitment to. The chamber really last year was about 26,000 between fair market value and uh, the additional um. Items that we purchased, uh, just being prudent with taxpayers' dollars, I really think we need to be looking at a dollar-for-dollar. Uh, exchange. And the 12,000 is the champion circle, what comes with a lot of benefits that we. Paid additionally for last year and and I don't really regret a dime that we spent with the chamber, because Marnie, you guys are. Are uh, good for our businesses and and economic development and the success of our businesses here with the support you provide. Um, so I would like for it to be taken into consideration that even if we uh look at a um. Belayment of uh rent for a couple of months, that we at least be recognized. Uh, for the additional uh contribution we're already given, which is well above the 12,000 and that the city receive. Um, the champion circle member benefits, with or without anything further done, because we're truly already spending. Over 16,000 uh, in what we're giving in discounted rent. Um, but then beyond that, I would be open during these times especially to look at something on a a six-month basis or something.
Can I respond, and I would say absolutely, yes, I I I had not taken into consideration the fair market value and um. Having that pointed out, you should definitely have been on the champion circle member list. Uh, already, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do, so if um. If we can overcome that first one, as as I was just presenting out to where we get the cha- uh champion circle member benefits. Uh, I have no problem looking at what we might be able to do further, so I'll turn it back to my fellow council members.
Uh, through the mayor. Oh, through the vice mayor. Oh, through the vice mayor.
No, no, the mayor's back.
Okay. Wanted to comment on that, Dave. We just can't rent, on the fair market value and the value that we're doing, we just can't rent that house to anybody. Now, there's no fair market, I mean, there's fair market value, but we cannot rent that house to any organization. It has to be a community organization that helps our community. So, that's why the council in the past, through staff's recommendation, has done what we're doing right now. We can't, you know, rent to a bank, we can't rent to a developer, it has to be through a organization that helps our community. So, we really can't go by that fair market value. But I understand what you're saying about making us a champion circle, but, you know, the staff report gave us a staff report and this is the best interest for the city. I mean, the chamber does wonderful things for the city. You know, they've done great things in the last three years from where they were and I think this would be a great thing for us to pair up with them. And, you know, it was given to us as the best interest for a year and I think that we should still do the year with them and then hopefully we'll get past this and move forward next year and continue on with the agreement that we had with them.
If I could respond through the mayor, Councilwoman Cardoza, it's, I was well aware when the city first rented out the house and they did put it out to multiple organizations, really anyone, because I know people that submitted bids to actually rent that. So, it was a decision by the city. I stand by what the city did. I agree with the chamber being in there. It's a historical house, they do a great job, they showcase the house. I'm a firm behind, you know, stand firm behind the chamber. I've been a chamber member for decades. So, it's nothing against the chamber, I just think that the city, as Marnie agreed, we just need to be, you know, given credit for the contribution that we are making to the chamber. And I'm open to whatever the council wants, if we want to look at it as six months, help them through this time. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're very transparent about this, that we do support our chamber and that our contribution is just not, you know, the monetary that we write the checks like we did last year to the tune of about 5,000, that there is that reduction. If we might not get 3,000, we might get 2,500, but anyway, there's still a reduction. And again, no way to belittle. Marnie, thank you so much. I'm a, I'm a member of the chamber, I value the chamber, I support the chamber, please do not take my, my words any other way.
Thank you, I do not, thank you.
Through the mayor. Oh, go ahead, vice mayor.
I too appreciate the hard work and the, and all the improvements and the vibe that the chamber has brought to the community. With Marnie's agreement, I'd like to go forward with Councilwoman Espendola's suggestion of let's, let's go ahead and do this for the six months and then let's revisit and see, see how things are going. It seemed to be agreeable to the chamber and it makes, makes good sense to me. Certainly want to try to help them out as we want to try to help out as many businesses as possible and people that champion business during this particular COVID-19 time. So, I would be in support of a six-month amendment as proposed in the alternative one. Thank you.
All right. Do you got any, Kim, do we already have public comments on this item, if any? I think we have something.
Yes.
Yes, sir, we received an email from Joe McFlure, the executive vice president, chief banking officer. His email indicates, oh, I'm sorry, Golden Civic Bank. His email indicates, "As a relatively new member of the board of directors of the chamber, I would like to express my support for item number 11. In parentheses, the amendment to lease of the Madden House for the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce offices." On tonight's agenda and requested the council vote in favor of amending the lease as presented, the chamber is an integral part of the community and has continued to work tirelessly on behalf of the Yuba Sutter businesses during the COVID-19 crisis by providing up-to-date information and resources online and in virtual meetings. Also, excuse me, also as the chair of the chamber's government affairs committee, we have continued to have virtual JAC meetings in the effort to see how we can continue to support our local government, governmental entities during this time. This amendment will allow the chamber to continue with this positive and crucial work that's needed in our community. Thank you for your consideration. And then we also received a comment from Tom Burns. He indicates, "I want to thank Donald Trump for instituting Bernie Sanders' plan with a great stimulus, money for nothing and your chicks for free. Manny and Grace are always willing to give away more of the people's money." That's all the comments.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is probably going to sound like a goofy question, but perhaps it's for the city attorney. The company I operate is a member of the chamber. Am I okay to vote on this?
You know, Councilmember Boomgarden, I don't have enough information as to the background. I don't, it depends on your role and status, there's a bunch of other factors involved. The safest legal approach at this particular time is to abstain from voting. That would be the safest legal approach, but on its face, I don't think it is a conflict, but I don't have all the information in order to assess that.
Well, that was.
I know this, that convoluted, I just don't have the information, I don't know, but safest approach is not to.
That was a nice squishy answer, thank you.
Through the mayor. Along those lines, Mr. Chappan, I would ask the same because my company and myself personally has been a member, I'm not on the board, not an ambassador. I mean, it's like if we look at everything, I think Mr. Cardoza has been an ambassador, he might be an ambassador. Do we have any conflicts in this across the board with our, any of our affiliations?
No, if you're not on the board and you're just merely a member of the chamber, you should be more than fine.
I have no conflict.
All right. Any other public comment, Judy, or Terrell?
No, sir. No other comment.
All right, motion time.
I would like to move towards, can we modify the most, the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
It sounds like it would be a six-month.
Right, so, adopt the, well, how about authorize the city manager to negotiate the approval and changes of the agreement with a six-month clause? I'm not sure, is it necessary to have the resolution adopted there, our attorney?
No, could I make a suggestion? So, maybe your motion is to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for a period of six months to set the lease at $1 per month in exchange for all the requirements under section one of the agreement, including being in the champion circle, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney.
I made that motion that our city attorney just outlined.
I would second that.
All right, we have a first and a second, it's all those in favor, thumbs up.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, was someone going to say something?
And I say thank you very much on behalf of the chamber, I really appreciate it and thank you for all the great work that you're doing. It's been a tough, tough few weeks, a month now, but thank you.
Thank you, Marnie.
Thank you, Marnie.
Always contact us directly, okay?
Yes, ma'am, yes, councilwoman, thank you.
See you.
All right. What? I thought I heard someone talk. We want an item number 12, future agenda items, this is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council later date, if any. All right. Judy, any comments on the, related to the agenda that may have came up?
No other comments, sir.
All right. Moving on to number 13, reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza.
Yes, mayor, I have a couple this week. Start off, had a regional housing authority meeting and great things are happening in our community. Two weeks ago, we broke ground on the New Haven apartment complex for the homeless and seniors in the service to help them. So, they're moving dirt, making great leeway. Foundation should start, foundation work should start here very shortly. It's great things, if you want to see it, please go by Garden Highway and Miles, Miles Drive and it's great things happen in our community, we're very happy and want to see great things happen for the homeless and especially our vets in the community. Second thing, I helped out Friday, did some volunteer work on the emergency food drive, filling up the Yuba Sutter food pantries. This was, helped out with the Forgy Foundation, the Yuba Sutter United Way, the Sutter COVID-19 Relief Task Force, our chamber leader, leadership team and Saylove. We, grand total at the end of the day was $35,000 in donations and 50,000 pounds worth of food into our food pantries for our Yuba Sutter community. So, that was great and there's still more food and donations coming in as we speak. So, I really want to thank the community, that's both Yuba and Sutter County, Marysville and the Marysville community and Yuba City, for everybody coming over making those donations to help the seniors and the folks that don't have food, to have dinner and lunch and for their families. And it should take us way past Christmas and hopefully into the new year, so that's great things. And then on closing, I just want to mention to the citizens of the community of Yuba City, this stay-at-home and not be able to do things, I know that kind of sucks, it's been a month. I know there's a lot of folks that want to go to the beauticians, there's a lot of folks that want to go out in public and have fun. We've run into the hard part of this, if you could please stay patient, there's just a couple more weeks for the governor to make a decision to see if we can get past this and start opening up our communities, counties in the state. The city of Yuba City is working hard with our counties and, and also our state representatives, we're trying to get past this, if you could just please be patient, we will all get through this together and we'll have better things in the future and great things for our community to come. And that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you. I have to follow Councilman Cardoza, well done. So, the last meeting that I attended officially for the city is the Sutter Buttes Flood Control and it was the first time that we also did a video conferencing and call-in, so it was an interesting process and we managed to get through it. The major takeaway that I would like to share is that we are reviewing budgets in the next few months and I will report more on those activities. Also, I had brought up in our last city council meeting, a couple of ideas and projects in reference to coordinating a message with our faith-based leaders and video, and I'd like to give a quick update on those two. We worked, I worked actually three items, the messaging for faith-based, the flyer resource for businesses and a potential video that we're working on. So, I worked with George Barlin, one of our staff from the city, along with our city manager and, and some local community members to frame a message that was then forwarded to various faith-based leaders to help affirm some of the same things that Councilman Cardoza just mentioned in his, his sharing about, you know, stay at home, washing your hands, social distancing. And I'd like to report that of the 20 I think we have on the list, we had about 70% participated in this message that was carried forward on the behalf of the entire council. So, that was a really good thing that we were able to do right before Easter weekend, those that practice Easter. And the second thing is that we worked with the chamber, Marnie and I worked with putting together with different resources of flyer, with our business team, Matty and Spencer, to distribute a flyer of information through our system. We utilized the existing list that we have of business license and sent this information through that system and we reached out to over 2,800 businesses that are registered with us here at the city. I confirmed with many people who own businesses that contacted me to say, hey, I received the information from the city on the flyer, which covered information of the CARES Act loans through Small Business Association and additional, and additional local resources through the chamber, through EDC, through us and EDD. So, that was another project that we completed. The third project that the mayor and I are working on with George Barlin and our city manager as well is a video and we'll give more information as we finish that project and move it forward. I met with Yuba County Robert Bendorf and our Dr. Lou Health Officer and sat down and had a conversation, you know, social distance with masks on and everything, in particular asking questions about when are we potentially going to open, what are the plans for these things, what does it look like, how are things progressing, you know? Not having had that opportunity to sit down and, and talk directly with her, I learned quite a bit by going over to the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, all the different air divisions that are by counties, Sutter County, Union County are handling through, through the CAOs and public health. The main thing that I was asking is, you know, about testing, about treatment and treatment, where are we at with these areas? Are we prepared in the sense of as we move towards her order expiring in May, on May 3rd? And also messaging about how we can do a better job, because at that time, some of the numbers were increasing with COVID-19 positives in our community and sharing that message with our faith-based leaders. And you saw some of her response to that in some of the videos. And so, I just want to reiterate and support what Councilman Cardoza and I'm sure my fellow council members who haven't had a chance to speak yet will share and impressing on you the great work that we've done so far and there's great work to be done still in reference to our health of our community. And it is really important on my aspect of how I make decisions is that I listen closely to our county health officer. It's really important because the information that she is skilled and, and an expert will guide my decisions as I move forward and, and finding how, as a city, we, we work towards reopening. The, the things that I'm hoping to learn from the health experts is, you know, hoping that we don't get to a place where opening too soon, you might end up doing more harm. And, and those conversations, we, we do have that within our council and within our partners, Sutter County and Yuba County and state legislators and the governor's office as well. I have had many conversations with many individuals in those capacities. So, let's keep up doing the great work, community, you've done an amazing job. The hardship is very challenging for all of us and I definitely want to make those right decisions. And I, I think that counting on what the state health officers and, and the local county health officers are important to recognize their expertise and these orders are important to follow. to follow through. So with that, I am done with my report. Thank you.
And thank you and welcome, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only one of my committees that I'm on, the Transit Authority, we did not meet, but we've been getting regular updates. And those updates, they are continuing with their safe practices with the reduced routes, the rear entrances of the bus. So they're operating in their fashion to make sure that they are compliant with the directives and the orders that's been issued by the governor and our local health officer, Dr. Lou. I'd like to shift my focus momentarily to, to say thank you. And we have been through some incredible times the last several months. And with that, I want to say thank you to Dr. Lou and Robert Bendorf and Steve Smith and all the other leaders. I too, a couple of weeks ago, have been over to the EOC, met with them, saw the hard work that they're putting in. And to be honest with you, I think it's a lot of the hard work that they made some tough decisions that helped us get ahead of this locally. And I do want to acknowledge that and say thank you because I think that's why the numbers are as low as they are. With that, the two greatest assets that we have here are our 68,000 plus residents that call Yuba City Home and the 300 plus families that are part of the Yuba City team. And just want to know that every decision we make, we have to take those into consideration because they are paramount to the success of our city in the future. Because without our residents, we're not a city. And without our team that provides the services, we can't meet the needs of, of our residents. So first of all, thank you all for all the hard work you've done, the sacrifices you've made. And I look forward to coming out of this on the backside because as I said earlier, we've got to be the type of people that say, even if, what are we going to do? Even if this, what are we going to do? And, you know, even if we're faced with challenges ahead of us, I really do think that it's time that we start looking at this through multiple lenses. And I completely respect the medical community. And again, thank you, Dr. Lou, for the things you've done. But we have to start looking at not only the medical impact, but also the economic impact, the social impact, the psychological impact that has on our residents. And we have already got the, the three committees that are working on the reopening. And I spent some time today with Assemblyman Gallagher, talking with him about this and the letter that is being coordinated to go forward. And I was, I fully support their effort to do as the president has said, and even our governor has said, to bring this back down to local controls because our community is not San Francisco, Santa Cruz, San Jose, Los Angeles. We're even vastly different from Sacramento, who's less than 50 miles away to the south. I think that we have to do things in an orderly fashion and I think we need to do things in a way that we can get some wins for our residents, some wins for our community, but do it in a safe manner. And we've got some challenges ahead of us and we're going to have to move back and forth as, as we see how the numbers come out. Public safety is paramount, but at some point we have to look at what else other than physical health is going on to our community. And I applaud Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nielsen for taking the lead on this and going to the governor, following our chains. I look forward to the governor's response and hopefully he will do exactly what the president said and what he has said and return the control back down to the local areas because we know our community best. We will look at that through the eyes of the people that's been put in office, the five of us, the five supervisors and our health officer. We need to look at it through multiple lenses to make the best decision for our community. So with that, thank you again. Thank you to all of our residents. Thank you to our entire team of families that are employed by the city. Know that you guys are at the top of everything that we think about is those two groups because we have to have you both. And we got some tough decisions, Mr. Mayor, but we shall get through this. And even if we're throwing a few curveballs, we will get through this. So stay encouraged and remember to tell people thank you because we can build a whole lot of confidence on what our future is going to look like when we come out of this on the backside.
All right. Very well said. Thank you, Dave. Vice, excuse me. Yeah, Vice Mayor Boomgarden. Sorry.
Why, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Nice words, Councilwoman Espandola, Councilman Cardoza and Councilman Shaw. I too do not want to be too redundant, but I think it goes, I need to, to make sure that we thank the folks that are working hard, some of them behind the scenes, some of them right out in front, city staff, county, those in the by-county EOC, Dr. Lou, all working tirelessly to try to navigate us through this, this pandemic. Today, another day without an increase in the cases, another day without an increase in the deceased and another day without an increase in those hospitalized. I think the track record for the community continues to be really, really good and that's attributable, of course, to the, to the efforts that our citizens are making for social distancing, masking up, et cetera, et cetera. I do think that it's important to also acknowledge Assemblyman Gallagher and his team. I was communicating with them right before the meeting. They are putting a letter of support with the multiple signatures for the governor to consider locally, giving the local ability to lift restrictions. And I think returning some of those decisions to those that are closest to the, to the issue and to the pandemic is, is a strong move in the right direction. I support the regional effort by the governor and I, I hope that that letter, which I understand from his office, the Assemblyman Gallagher's office could be delivered as soon as a couple days, actually gets the ball moving. I want to go on record as supportive of implementing a phased in lifting of the restrictions as soon as possible and hopefully before May the 3rd. I think, I don't have a PhD behind my name or a doctor or anything else, but the statistics seem to certainly indicate that, that consideration of lifting restrictions and getting those things that Councilman Shaw talked about, our economy, our, our, our citizens' mental health, the social issues, taking some of the burden off our police and fire who are responding to COVID-related incidents on a daily basis. I think it makes sense that, and I, I hope that, I hope the governor sees the wisdom in returning some of those decisions in a phased method to, to the locals. I want to thank the council. We have been meeting weekly. I want to thank the city staff for providing us with the financial information that they're providing to us so that we are understanding of what's going to be a challenge in front of us. And I would close by just saying, citizens of Yuba City and of course their guests need to know that this city council is engaged and paying attention. And even though it sometimes looks like we're not doing something, in many cases, we do not have the ability to do some of the things you'd like us to do, but that doesn't mean we haven't got an interest and we aren't working in the background to push forward. With that, Mayor, I'd like to thank you and thank each one of the council people that I work with and I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. You know, one of the, one of the bad parts about going last is the risk of being redundant, but all the thank yous and the perspectives you, you folks provide, I couldn't agree more. And it's important to recognize this is, of course, unprecedented, that the, some of the things I, I can't even imagine, I try to in an effort to empathize with some folks maybe going to, our business owners, some of the, our residents here. I've got an email from more than one person who says, you know what? I've lost my job. I've got two kids. I can't make my rent. What do I do, Mr. Mayor? And to get that kind of an email, it's really, will really choke you up. Things are really tough for a lot of people. And yes, we are, I think we're, we're engaged, we're doing our job. We have a wonderful staff who all have a very positive attitude. We have a great, the folks who work for the city, doing, doing their thing out there every day, doing whatever they can. And I, I also, you know, want to make an effort of applauding Assemblyman Gallagher, Senator Nielsen, the effort saved down, all of our local leaders who have taken the initiative to step up and express our cumulative opinion to the governor or to request that we have some local control. I think it is time for that. They, in the, down there in the, in this state capital, they, you're only as strong as your weakest link. We have LA, San Francisco Bay Area where they, we have to have some statewide regulations that, that recognize the importance of the tragic, there's tragic circumstances those folks are in. We are not LA. And that's in fact, one of the things we're proud of is we are not LA. And I think that we have an opportunity here to request to have some local control. We don't want to tell anybody to do their job. Like, as you said, Vice Mayor, I, I too do not have a PhD behind my name or MD behind my name, but there's some, there, among those circles, you have the continuum, obviously right thing to do, obviously wrong thing to do. In the middle is where your options lie. And those were the PhDs and MDs and those folks make their decisions. All we are simply asking is that within that overlap, that they please consider or lean towards the option of getting us open, get our businesses back to where they are. And every business owner I've talked to, a few have texted me tonight, they are more than willing to take any precaution necessary in order to make that happen. And I trust them in that. And I also trust our community that they would abide by that. I think it's time. I think it's ready. Dr. Lou had mentioned one time to go through two incubation cycles. For example, for the reason if someone happens to catch it on day number 13, we won't know they have it until the end of the second cycle. So that makes sense to me as long as the numbers are tamped down. And guess what? They're our tamped down because the, the regulations and the orders we put in place. I think our community has proven that we're able to abide by that. I think it's time. I definitely support the notion to extend it out to local control. I want to just acknowledge and thank our, our entire community, all of our residents, our business owners and folks out there. We are making some really tough changes and I think are, are our new normal, much like post nine 11, never got quite back to where it was on, you know, in August of 01. However, I think there's going to be some positive things come out of it, but it's not going to come without some sacrifice, some challenges and some civic changes. But as Dave said, when we come out of this, I think we will be stronger, but we're going to have to, when things shake out, there're going to be some people that are in a, in a bad way and we're going to have to pop up and, and help them out as much as we can. So I want to thank all four of you and of course, city staff for the hard work you do. Communicate with one or, one or all of you at least every day, along with our city manager and a bunch of other folks to stay on top of this crisis, to, to get us through it and be as safe as possible, reopen as fast as possible, but not be reckless about it. Be incremental, be strategic and recognize biology is not politics. This is not a First Amendment thing. This is biology. This virus does not care about your politics, doesn't know where you live or it doesn't matter what, what country you're in. It will get you if you're not smart about it. So we don't go out there and get close to each other and congregate just to prove some point. That's going to, that is going to get people killed. We do not do that. We do, we do smart, we strategic and we do this the right, right way. So that being said, anything further? All right. At this time then, we will go ahead and thank everybody who participated and, and stuck it through with us to the end of this meeting and we need to re-adjourn to closed session. We'll see you guys there. Thank you.